Good morning.
May I have a big air?
No.
Thank you for the time.
We've talked on the phone already.
Yep, we have.
I've not been interviewed by two women for all this time.
Oh, it's happened before though?
No, not ever since.
Just not at a time. Okay. So, this will be up to a 45-minute interview process. We'll start with Connie will ask one question, I'll ask a follow-up question. The first answer, we're hoping we'll be able to limit to five minutes.
It will be less than five minutes.
Okay, and then after that, each question's three minutes. And that will keep us on track to make sure that we are, we complete the interview within a 45-minute timeframe. And then if Connie or I have any follow-up questions based on your written questionnaire answers or on your verbal answers, we'll ask those at that time. And then we each have a question that was not publicized that we're asking every candidate.
A secret question?
Yes, a secret question. Connie will ask one, and I actually have two. One's a very simple kind of yes or no type thing.
I should apologize, first thing off, for the tiny font on my application that I sent in on the borrowed computer.
Took a big magnifying glass.
I couldn't figure out how to change the font on the, yeah. I had to read it with a magnifying glass too.
She actually did bring in a magnifying glass.
I did, she shared it.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, that's okay. And so some of the, some of the questions we'll be asking you throughout the interview, you might include in the first answer, but you have to ask the same questions of each candidate, meaning give you an opportunity to expound on a topic if you want. So, the very first question is, what would be your message on the campaign trail?
I would start out by explaining that I'm a 41-year resident, property owner, and boat haven occupant, lived in town that long. I've been a marine surveyor for 47 or 48 years now. I don't believe there is a boat harbor north of San Francisco or south of Kodiak that I have not been into recently, some of them several times. I'm very familiar with all the port operations because that's where the boats are when I survey them. I do 150, 200 boats a year. I have been a commercial fisherman until last year. I've fished for 42 years. I got experience with aircraft both as a ex-military pilot and as a private pilot. Own five of my own airplanes. I have been a frequent flyer of the various airlines that have served Port Angeles, which I miss badly. I'm not familiar with the plastics industry, but I can learn it. I am very familiar with all of the marine trades. I work closely with shipwrights routinely on insurance claims. I feel I have good qualifications both as it relates to aircraft, airports, and marine. I was a management trainee with Wells Fargo Bank for almost five years. And I spent a year and a half in their portfolio department, which would tell you that I'm familiar with lending instruments and investments. I was also a loan department trainee in all three sections of their lending department, both retail, commercial, and real estate. And I'm pretty familiar with all the mechanics of that. I think my qualifications are probably to the 75th or 80th percentile going in the door, but I am ignorant of your composite and plastic stuff.
Thank you.
I told you it'd be short.
It's to the point though, impactful. So, what port lines of business do you best understand and which ones are new to you?
Well, the marine and the aircraft and the airport stuff I'm familiar with, particularly in the marine, but airplanes have not changed a lot in the last 25, 30 years. I'm very much aware of the need for air service between here and Seattle. When I have to fly to Alaska, which I do frequently, usually one-day trips, I have to get up at 3:15 in the morning to drive to Sea-Tac and hopefully make the airplane. Usually I make it. And I get home at 11:30 at night on the same day. Makes a very long day out, which I'd love to be able to fly out at 5:30 in the morning instead of beginning up at 3:00. I don't understand, I'm sure there are some reasons behind it, I don't understand why we seem to be unable to get a commercial carrier to pick that service up. I was reading lately the various airlines that were under consideration, and I took note of the fact that several of them fly large aircraft, which nobody's going to make any money on flying a 30-seat airplane out of Port Angeles. I can't imagine any operator could possibly make any money on anything bigger than a Cessna Caravan, 10, 12-seat plane tops. And I don't know why we don't have some of these carriers queuing up for this. There are a bunch of them around. I fly them routinely up and down. Pen Air comes to mind, and there are a number of other smaller carriers with small planes. You want to get into the marine stuff? You want some detail on that? Are you happy with that? Is that sufficient answer to your question?
Oh, I think, no, please get into the marine aspect a little bit more.
I'm looking forward to seeing Port Angeles become a major maintenance port for the commercial fleet. Most of my survey work are working fish boats and packers and tenders. I do a few yachts, but not, I don't focus on them. We have more potential in this place than any port around the sound with the available real estate, navigable water, and the general location. If you go into Port Townsend Shipyard on any given day, you will find 200 people working there upwards of, which tells me there are 200 families making a living out of that shipyard. If you go into this shipyard, you'll find five. That, of course, does not include the Flatbush and Westport folks, which are a sub-area of that same thing. But I'm talking about small contractors. This port has the ability to deal with those same boats and lacks only the facilities. I'm particularly interested in seeing those be brought to a point where they're viable. And I know what viable is for the small contractors because I've worked with them all the time.
Tell us about the opportunities and challenges that you see for two of the port's lines of business.
Well, I've just decoupled two of those. The commercial air service to Seattle is imperative, and we get that online for a half a dozen reasons. And there are a lot of folks out there like me who have a briefcase business, do not need an office in Seattle or any other particular place, as long as they have the ability to move around and are computer literate. The lack of air service is what limits a lot of those folks from living in Port Angeles as compared to a half a dozen other, like Shelton, for instance, has an airport. You know, there's a whole bunch of small feeder airports around. I've watched Port Angeles lose 6,000 people in population over the last eight or 10 years as the mills have closed. And I don't think we're ever going to replace those jobs with just tourism. Tourism is a significant item, but it's not the kind of jobs that used to support this community. The marine trades could easily provide employment for 150, 200, the same, the same folks that I see in Port Townsend. And each of those guys feeds a family. You've got a 2.6 multiplier on top of that, plus the ancillary folks that it requires to bring the parts in. So, it's a double multiplier on that one. I'm looking at seeing this community stabilize itself population-wise and economically, and I see the port as paramount in that, the centerpiece of that. I don't see anything else that's going to do it. I don't see a great increase in timber. If it stays status quo, we'll be lucky. But an increase in port service facilities could be huge in this community.
Do you see current, do you see a current weakness in the way that the port operates? And if so, what would you do to change it?
The one that comes to mind almost stopped me from putting my name in for this gig. I've never been on a three-man board. I've got 23 or 24 years of accumulated board experience on a half dozen different boards, ranging from five to 15 people. 15, obviously, is unmanageable. Three makes me nervous. You know, it's an odd man out scenario. I would particularly like to see the port go to a five-man board, which I realize is a ballot issue. And I realized it was on the ballot and failed last time. Why it failed, I have no idea. I presume the proposal was not written up attractively enough for the voters. I don't know what else to make of that. Beyond that, I applaud your obvious efforts to transparency, which this board historically in years past has lacked. I'll be perfectly blunt about it. I've been in and out of port board meetings, on and off, for 30 and 35 years, mostly sitting quietly in the back of the room. And I recall clearly the way this board and the city council and the county commissioners used to operate as a daisy chain. Same guys went round and round them. It was, it was the old boys club. And obviously, I wasn't impressed with that.
Okay, thank you. What do you consider to be the most challenging aspect when dealing with the public?
Transparency. Candor, transparency. I don't know how to go beyond that.
What do you see as customer service policies and goals for our stakeholders and our tenants?
Policies and goals, well, I'm looking to see both the airport and the marine side of this thing increase its activity and the resulting income and jobs from that activity as a general policy statement. That's, that's, that's why I threw my name in the ring for this thing. If the port was accomplishing what I'd like to see it accomplish, I would not have put my name up. I don't need any more years on boards just for recreational value. I've got, I'm sufficient of that.
So, what specifically I'm talking about is customer service policies. So, is there anything that you, from your experience, you've seen that you would like this port to be doing differently from a customer service perspective?
Well, I'm not, I'm not up to date enough on what they're doing to speak definitively to that. I would make the observation that I think if we could find a commercial air carrier who would service this place, the port should give them a free ride at the airport. Having that airport out there with nothing happening in it is a travesty. And letting a carrier use it for free for a couple of three years to get their feet under them is a minimal contribution. You're not losing anything by doing that. You're certainly gaining the traffic. It costs nothing to give away something you're not getting anything for to start with. The same comment relates to the marine service area that's being worked on out here. Right now, it's not making anybody any money. It has the potential of making a great deal of money for a lot of people, a lot of small tradesmen, and making the ports some money as well. Concurrent with that, there are several things that bring boats into ports as opposed to going to other ports. One is fuel cost. Anything that can be done to help the fuel supplier keep his costs down is going to be a large item. Some of these boats pack multiple thousands of gallons of fuel, and that's, that's a big ticket item. That'll move a boat from one port to another. The ability to buy three or four gallons, 1,000 gallons of fuel 10 or 15 cents cheaper is the money right out of the operator's pocket. And that'll move people. I see it happen all the time. A good example of what a good shipyard compared to a poor one can do for a community is Wrangell, Alaska. Wrangell was a little bitty town of 3,000 or so people. Used to be a mill town, lost its mill, got some government grants to try to do something in the way of economic development. They blew about half of their money on a museum, but there was nobody in town to go to the museum. Nice thought, but a waste of money. Before they spent it all, somebody finally got smart and said, let's clean up the shipyard, which had been one of the most abysmal shipyards I've ever seen. It was mud. Its travel lift was Mickey Mouse, would break down, would get stuck in the mud. They'd have weeks when they couldn't remove a boat that was literally stuck in the mud. Nobody wanted to Wrangell to have anything done. They spent a bunch of money, put in a big travel lift, and a quay that's appropriate to it, and a concrete slab over the entire yard. The slab they put in is 14 inches thick of concrete. It's like an airport runway threshold. I've never seen any in quite life. It now has, in a matter of five years, it has picked up about 100 to 110 subcontractors who rent space in that yard, are continually busy, they have a waiting list that goes out months ahead. The place is full of boats. The docks are full of boats waiting to get hauled out because the yard is full. It has changed the town dramatically.
What policy and procedure topics would you be most interested in exploring if you were appointed?
The ones I'm most familiar with, the airport and the marine facilities. Try to concentrate on something I know something about.
What is your experience in finance and understanding of financial documents?
Well, I did a year and a half in Wells Fargo's portfolio department, in which I handled, this is pre-computer, and you have to, you have to remember that in that timeframe, the guys in the portfolio department had a desk that had a responsibility for utilities, for transit, for petroleum, you know, there were about a dozen of us. We had areas of responsibilities. And we had two or three girls who ran up and down corridors all day long, ringing us little notes that we now get on computers. And I handled transportation and fuel during that time. But those items are not significantly different in portfolio contests than from handling anything else. I worked for about a year with Wells in retail lending, which means, in bank terms, that means automobile dealers and automobile contracts. And I handled several dealerships for the bank in that context. I was with Wells Fargo. Wells also trained me during that time. That was where I learned my, my surveying. They had two old surveyors that they had on retainer. And every time they'd send one of these guys out, they'd send me out with them. So, I had basically an apprenticeship with two of these folks. Within a year and a half, both of them had died, and I became the in-house surveyor for Wells Fargo. That lasted about a year and a half. All the banks had in-house surveyors in central California then, until one day, the Bank of California surveyor made a mistake on a survey, it missed and galvanized through all fittings. The survey was passed on to the insurance company who wrote the policy on it. The boat went offshore and sank right under the Golden Gate Bridge and killed four people, four wrongful death suits. It eliminated all the in-house surveyors, just like that. There have not been any in-house surveyors with banks since then that I know of. The bank also used me for heavy equipment and aircraft evaluation because I had some familiarity with it. I don't do that anymore because those are simple pursuits that are basically blue book stuff. You pull out a book, you read the value of the equipment, and you write it down. The commercial fish boats, however, are all individually different. They're separate, each, each boat is the same. There are no two identical boats, similar, but not identical. That's where I've confined myself. I do 150 to 200 boats a year. And I work from San Diego to Kodiak normally.
I know that's all day flights. I flew one back in port to Anchorage a lot.
Yep, me too. And then I rent a car and drive out to the coast, and try to get back home the same day. I can make it about half the time.
Yeah, I understand. Do you have enough time available for port meetings and other community operations?
I schedule my own work, so the answer is yes. The worst thing that would happen to me would, I'd get stuck in the Ketchikan Airport with a broken airplane or a weather anomaly. And then we have things like Skype and conference calls. I'm available electronically all the time. I just found out yesterday I can Skype on my fancy telephone. I didn't know I could do that.
Okay. How should the port commission interface with other, so the port commission, how should we as a commission interface with other public agencies and organizations?
Subtly, but frequently. That's an oblique answer. And I apologize for that. I can recall a number of historic interfaces between this port commission as a used set with a variety of other civic organizations that I did not find transparent, let me put it that way. The transparency bit with me is paramount. I read up on the two of you before I threw my hat in the ring. I wasn't comfortable with the, you know, the transparency, I wouldn't be here.
Okay. Okay, thinking back to past life experiences when you made an important decision, tell us about a decision you made that you later regretted, and what did you learn from that experience?
Marriage comes to mind. But that's not the answer you're looking for.
Could be.
Yeah.
Depends on what you learned from it.
I've been married, divorced one time. I learned not to repeat my errors.
There you go.
I was within 10 days of my enlistment being over in the Army, and I'd just checked out on an HC-37, which was the Army's first jet chopper. And we knew that Hueys were coming down the line. We knew that we were going into NOM. We knew what was going on. And I was 20 years old, and I failed my flight physical because of a hearing loss that I'd picked up flying HC-13s and 19s in the previous three years. Those were the old flying bananas, the twin rotor predecessor to the Chinook. They're horrible airplanes. But when you're 19, 20 years old, you don't care. But when I failed the flight physical, the Army wanted me to go to Fort Bliss and become an instructor. And it was in the spring, and Fort Bliss was already 95 degrees. And I viewed that as a drastic step down, and I didn't, I didn't re-up. I should have re-upped. Of course, if I had, I would have been in NOM, and I might not be here today. At the time, you know, your decisions when you make, you know, when you're 20, in retrospect, don't seem too great. I have since learned that most males don't develop full frontal lobe development until they're about 27. And that was, that was my case.
What do you wish to accomplish during this appointed term as a port commissioner?
I want to see the Marine Trade Center through to fruition. I want to see it functioning. I want to see 150 craftsmen working on boats down there. I want to see the result, economic flow that results. I know what it is. I've seen it other places. I've seen it at Wrangell. If you can pull a pitiful little town like Wrangell out of the mud with a good shipyard, it's a huge item. Secondarily, I'd like to see the airport function as an airport rather than a parking lot for logs. I don't have anything against logs, but that's not the purpose of an airport.
I don't have any follow-up questions.
I don't either. Okay. So, here's my question I'm asking everyone. Historically, the log business has been a port's bread and butter for its operating revenue. What do you see as the future for this line of business and for timber products?
Well, the timber, the timber's there, the park is full of it. And I have no problems with selective harvesting of timber from public lands. I think it's appropriate. The future of it is going to depend on the Oriental markets for logs and how many raw logs we're willing to sell versus trying to do finished products. We've lost all of our mills. When I came to town, I believe there were four mills in town, or five, and about 35 shake mills in the West End. We have one Japanese-owned, fully automated paper mill left, which reduced the labor force by more than half when they automated the thing. I'm not unhappy with the Japanese. That's, you know, we offered them a very attractive deal, and they took it. They would have been fools not to. But I don't see any new mills coming into town. I don't see, I don't see that in the future. And I don't know why we don't seem to want mill workers anymore, but we don't. We seem to, as a community, we seem to be looking toward the real estate and tourist stuff. Both of these are fine, but if you don't have a population base, you're not going to sell them a lot of real estate. And selling Chinese knickknacks to tourists is not a heavy economic boost to the community. I'm not anti-tourism, but I don't see it as a major contributor to this economy.
This question is kind of, two parts. One is, please share your experience, so it's experience in evaluating risk in a contract. And then what is your philosophy in evaluating risk versus new opportunity and our mission to grow our economy?
Well...
So, experience and then philosophy?
Yeah, tough question. Socially, I'm progressive. Financially, I'm conservative. If that seems to be a conflict, that's the way it is. I spent enough time in banks that it's hard not to be financially conservative coming from that place. I left Wells Fargo as an assistant manager with an unsecured lending limit of $12,000 on my own signature. So, I'm not unfamiliar with evaluating lending risks, which are not... So I'm not unfamiliar with evaluating lending risks, which are not drastically different from investment risks. That's basically what you're loaning the money on, is the entrepreneur's ability to set up his own risk schedule so it's safe enough, you can give some of your money. I'm not unfamiliar with it. I don't know how to speak to that more precisely than that. In terms of investment versus risk, it's, it's, it's a balance. Losing a hundred thousand dollars on a bad investment is way more significant than making a hundred thousand dollars. I'm trying to figure out to give you a more precise answer than that.
You gave me a lot of information about your experience there and kind of your philosophy. You, you answered.
Okay.
Thank you. At this time, can you verbally commit to running for port commissioner in two thousand seventeen?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't see any lifestyle changes ahead. I got no health problems. I'm not getting married. I'm not, I'm not doing any of these things.
All right. That was the last one. Very nice. You didn't have any follow-up, then I think we're, we're complete. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
Appreciate you coming in.
I appreciate your time.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did I have a big ear?
No.
Thank you.
We talked on the phone already.
Yep, yep.
I've not been interviewed by two women for the longest time.
Oh, it's happened before, though?
No, not in this interview.
Okay. So this will be up to a forty-five-minute interview process. We'll start with Connie, the last one question. I'll have to ask the same questions of each candidate. May I give you an opportunity to expound on the topic you want? So the very first question is, what would be your message on the campaign trail?
I would start out by explaining that I'm a forty-one-year resident, property owner, and boat haven occupant, lived in town that long. I've been a marine surveyor for forty-seven or forty-eight years now. I don't believe there is a boat harbor north of San Francisco or south of Kodiak that I have not been into recently, some of them several times. I'm very familiar with all the port operations.
Ask the follow-up question. The first answer, we're hoping we'll be able to limit to five minutes? And then after that...
It will be less than five minutes.
Okay. And then after that, each question's three minutes, and that will keep us on track to make sure that we are, we complete the, the interview within a forty-five-minute timeframe. And then if Connie or I have any follow-up questions based on your written questionnaire answers or on your verbal answers, we'll ask those at that time. And then we each have a question that was not publicized that we, that we're asking every candidate.
Because that's where the boats are when I survey them. I do a hundred and fifty, two hundred boats a year. I have been a commercial fisherman until last year. I fish for forty-two years. I got experience with aircraft, both as a ex-military pilot and as a private pilot. Own five of my own airplanes. I have been a frequent flyer of the various airlines that have served Port Angeles, which I miss badly. I'm not familiar with the, the plastics industry, but I, I can learn it. I am very familiar with all of the marine trades. I work closely... Secret question?
Yes, a secret question. Connie will ask one, and I actually have two. One's a very simple, kind of yes or no type thing.
I should apologize, first thing off, for the tiny font on my application that I sent in on the borrowed computer, and I couldn't...
Took a big magnifying glass for me.
I couldn't figure out how to change the font on the, on the, I had to read it with a magnifying glass, too.
Okay. She actually did bring in a magnifying glass. We shared it.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. That's okay. Yeah. And so some of the, some of the questions we'll be asking you throughout the interview you might include in the first answer, but...